The Pitt County Board of Commissioners meeting will begin in one minute. If you wish to speak during the public comments, please sign up at the podium in the hallway. The Pitt County Board of Commissioners meeting will begin in 30 seconds. If you wish to speak during the public comments. The Pitt County Board of Commissioners meeting will begin in 10 seconds.
Good morning and welcome to the Pitt County Board of Commissioners meeting. Morning session to those of you in the audience and those of you by way of television and other social media. Welcome. This time I'd like to call the meeting to order. If you would register your name if you're present. Thank you very much. It's have invocation now by Commissioner Higgins and pledge by Commissioner Fitzpatrick.
Hello, we thank you for this day. We ask your presence in this arena today. We ask for your guidance in all of the decisions that we make and that our decision will be in the best interest of the citizens of Pitt County, your children, these and all blessings we ask in your son Jesus' name. Say amen.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I moved that we accepted Janet as printed.
Second it.
Has been moved properly seconded, let it be known by your vote, please. First thing on our agenda is a presentation, Miller Health Court Judge Wendy Hazleton. Welcome and please come forward.
You? I am Wendy S. Hazleton District Court Judge here in Pitt County and I am here this morning to do a brief presentation for you for a behavioral health treatment court for Pitt County. But before I begin, I would like to do two things. First, I would like to recognize any of the advisory team members here. Would you please stand? We have District Attorney Ferris Dixon. We have Reverend Pastor Coles, CEO Churches Outreach Network, and we have Nancy Ray, Assistant Clerk. Thank you. Next, I would like to direct your attention to the packet. You should have received some information regarding the Behavioral Health Treatment Court. And also I have passed to you for your perusal, a copy of the participant handbook. So the purpose of the Behavioral Health Treatment Court is to identify individuals with mental illnesses and substitute the normal court process for a more problem-solving process. So you may ask, how will this court work? So someone will come into the court system. That person can be identified as having a pre-diagnosed illness or they can be referred to the program to be screened for a possible mental illness. Now they will have to go to the Assistant District Attorney for approval or to the District Attorney for approval. If they are approved, then they will be staffed by the team. And that is a group of individuals that will be working directly with the participants. If they are accepted and if they voluntarily enter into the program, they will have to complete our five-phase program. The program is a supervised treatment plan that has been developed jointly by a team of court staff and mental health professionals. There will be incentives for compliance and there will be sanctions for non-compliance. Once a participant has completed all five phases, we will celebrate them with a graduation and they will be given an after-care treatment program to assist them on their journey. The whole purpose of this specialty court is a three-fold process. First, we want to keep our community of citizens with mental illnesses out of the court system. Secondly, we want to help manage their mental well-being. And third, we want them to become productive and functioning members of society. And so in order to do this, we are going to need your help. I have also provided in your packet a proposed budget for our Mental Health Courts. And I just want to do a side note. We noted a number in that budget. However, that amount may be a little bit higher based on the information that we have received from surrounding behavioral health treatment courts. That amount will be a little bit additional. But I can tell you that we have two organizations that have partnered with us, Integrated Family Services and Pride in North Carolina. They have not only decided that they will come in and do free screenings for us, but they are also volunteering to be the case managers to help get this program off the ground. So I think that is a wonderful thing. But we know that they will not be able to give us this service free of charge for a long period of time. So that is when we will need funds to help sustain and have a full-time case manager on file so that that person can assist us with continuing with the Behavioral Health Treatment Court. So finally, the Behavioral Health Treatment Court Advisory Team is asking you to consider two things this morning. First, we are asking the board to strongly make an appropriation in the upcoming budget so we can get our Behavioral Health Treatment Court up and running properly. Secondly, we are asking that the county serve as the grant applicant for any programs and any funding and any grants that the program may come into contact with. Understanding that we will ourselves be looking for additional grants to help sustain and fund this program. So I want to thank each and every one of you for your participation this morning. I now open myself or any member of the advisory team to you for any questions that you may have.
Any question from the board?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm understanding, I think from the information we had and from what you said, is that you're asking and you all are asking that this be considered when we sit down and look at our budget?
Yes, ma'am, we are.
For the next year.
Yes, ma'am.
And I certainly, as one commissioner, think that that is very appropriate.
Thank you.
I was interested in the two different budgets, the startup expenses on page two and page three. We have two different amounts for startup expenses.
Yes, sir. So we have a case management offset fund and that is some money that we have set aside in the event that Integrated Family Services and Pride in North Carolina needed some additional money to assist them with running the program. Right now, they are going to do it free of charge. So that is a number that I plugged in in the event that they need assistance to offset what they are doing for us. In the second budget, the full-time case management employee, that is the amount that I have plugged in for the full-time employee that we will need to help sustain the Mental Health Court once Integrated Family Services and Pride in North Carolina are no longer able to offer us that free service.
So Judge Hazel, are you asking for the $27,280 plus the 60, the other number?
Fifty-two, two-eighty.
Fifty-two, two-eighty, both numbers for July 1?
No, sir. We would, we gave you the first budget because that budget will show pretty much what we will be asking for, the 27, with the assistance of Integrated Family Services. However, the second budget shows what we will be asking in the event Integrated Family Services and Pride in North Carolina were unable to offer us that free service. So the second budget is more likely the number that we will need.
So when would you know whether those two entities would be able to participate and assist in the funding?
They are participating. They are willing to participate. We actually have a pilot program that we are going to launch in July and they are going to be giving us those services. Now, they have not informed us how long they will be providing those services free to us. So that is why we had the second budget to let the commissioners know what exactly we would probably need in the event they stop offering us that free service.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, if I could make a couple of comments. The North Carolina General Assembly in their preparation of the budget that has not yet been adopted did have a special appropriation in there of $150,000 for two initiatives, justice initiatives, one being the tree pile justice initiative of Judge Blunt. And there's money in there as well as in $150,000 for the Mental Health Court right now. So that's on hold. We, the whole state budget is on hold. I know there's maybe some conversation, maybe trying to get some special funding to get this, both the initiatives move forward even absent the adoption of a state budget. I would recommend that we, that you direct me to consider this as part of the overall budget considerations for fiscal year 2021. Just keep in mind, this will be an expansion item within the budget, but we will make all diligent effort to see what we can do for it.
I'd like to make a motion accordingly.
Second.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Scott, if there is an offset that's actually achieved by doing this, does that mean that the sheriff's budget will be impacted in any way?
I would think the offset would be that you would have less people going to the detention center.
Right.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Judge Hazleton or Mr. Dixon. Potentially less folks would be going to the detention center possibly. I'll defer that to you.
Judge, I actually looked at the numbers. It costs roughly, as it says in our program, about $99.07 to house one. On average, it's those who have mental health issues spend 35 to 60 days in custody versus those without mental health issues spending 15 to 17. If you were to go with the high number, and we have 15 participants for a year on average, which is what we have planned to start up with to make sure we have the program working well, that will end up being a saving as to the jail of about $63,915. If we get up to 30 participants, and we tend to do that slowly to make sure it fits with the county and that we have the program working well, that'll end up being roughly about $127,830.30. And that's the only high end. But what we found in looking at other programs around the state is the more time that you have people in treatment courts, whether it's drug treatment court or mental health treatment court, the less money you spend on jails. And in fact, in the program we went with Judge Blunt about pre-trial release, there have actually been some counties where they were looking at building a new jail and did not have to do so because those beds were saved because those people were out in other programs. So it will end up being a cost-saving for the county.
Cost-saving for the county, assuming that we give the Sheriff Department less money? Is that?
Well, technically, I think the capacity right now minus F block is 496. She has to staff up the detention center for 24/7 operation, 365 days a year for that 500-bed capacity. So even if we were to reduce the number of inmates by 20 or 30, for instance, that wouldn't be enough to shut another block down and then technically have less employees.
Okay.
She's still going to have the fully loaded cost to run that center.
That answers my question, thank you.
But you could also bring in more federal inmates, which would increase the revenue.
Right.
Correct.
So you're saying that the F block will be opened?
Pardon?
The F block will be opened?
No, that's not what we're saying.
Okay. I heard the F block mentioned.
Well, I certainly want to thank both of you, Judge Hazleton and Mr. Dixon, for your fine presentation. Now, I know from working in this initiative and environment that this is some program that is long overdue. And certainly, we want to try to do our best to stand behind it. And as said before by our manager, we will consider this during our budget process. Again, thank you for your fine presentation.
Thank you.
We need to vote.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor. At this time, can we vote? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
Chairman, might we get a quick picture with a little bit of time allotted for us?
What's up?
Might we get a picture with a short time allotted for us?
We're going down there anyways, that's fine. We're going down for the presentation.
Great, okay, sounds good. We'll do it now.
All right, Mr. Chairman, we next have a resolution to recognize the 100th anniversary of the passage of the 19th Amendment to the Constitution of the United States and the founding of the League of Women Voters. We're asking, we have a representative here from the League of Women Voters, she'll come forward. And Mr. Chairman, I think there's been a request to ask all the female members of the board to come down.
Okay, very good.
And any male members, we don't want to discriminate. Yes, if we can also get a motion to approve the resolution before we present it.
Summate.
Second.
Melvin, good? Melvin, please come.
Did it all register?
Yes.
Okay.
I can't see it quite yet. Yep.
Okay, great.
We have Pat Adams here representing the League of Women Voters of North Carolina. And she's here to accept the resolution, wants to read it. So Mr. Chairman, if you'd like, I'll be happy to read it.
Please, thank you.
Again, it's entitled, "Resolution Recognizing the 100th Anniversary of the Passage of the 19th Amendment to the Constitution of the United States and Founding of the League of Women Voters." Whereas, "An Organized Movement to Enfranchisize Women Began in July 1848 at a Convention in Seneca Falls, New York, Whereas Through the Efforts of Brave and Courageous Women Referred to as Suffragists, Who Sacrificed Family, Their Personal Life, and Their Financial Resources For Over Seventy Years To Gain Equal Rights for Women, Especially the Right to Vote. And Whereas, Women and Men, Black and White, Supported Women's Suffrage Movement For Women to Gain the Constitutional Right of Having a Voice in Making the Laws to Govern Them. Whereas, The Women's Suffrage Movement Led to the Passage of the 19th Amendment to the Constitution of the United States in 1919, With Ratification by the States by the Summer of 1920. And Whereas, The National Women's Suffrage Association Dissolved in 1920 To Create the League of Women Voters of the U.S. To Register Voters and Educate All Voters. Whereas, The League of Women Voters of North Carolina Launched on October 7, 1920, On the Steps of the Guilford County Courthouse By Grootude Veil, A Politically Active and Tireless Young Woman From Goldsboro, North Carolina. Whereas, More Than 120,000 Women Were Registered to Vote in North Carolina by 1920. And Whereas, Women Today Constituted a Majority Vote in Our State and U.S. And Are Running for the Office in Higher Numbers And More Active in the Election Process Than Ever Before in History. Now Therefore Be Resolved, The Pitt County Board of Commissioners Recognize That the 100th Anniversary of Women Getting the Right to Vote And the Founding of the League of Women Voters in the United States and in North Carolina Is Recognized for the Impact These Historic Accomplishments Have on Citizens Engagement And the Civic Life of the Community, the State, and the Nation. This is Adopted the 9th Day of March 2020, Signed by our Chairman Melvin McLaughlin And Attested by our Clerk Kimberly W. Hines. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you for your hard work and your dedication.
Thank you.
Picture.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for inviting me. Congratulations to all the women of Pitt County who worked hard for this and all of you who are elected. My late husband firmly believed women were going to be the saving grace of the world.
Smart husband.
All right. All right, next, if we can ask Jan Elliott to come forward and anybody else she would like to bring with her. As we recognize, we can also, we can have a motion to adopt the Social Workers Generation Strong proclamation.
So move.
Second.
Your social worker suit. Yes, we're both in ours.
Mr. Chairman, would you like me to proceed to read?
Please.
Okay. So we have a proclamation entitled, "Social Workers Generation Strong," Social Work Month 2020. Proclamation entitled, "Social Workers Generation Strong." Whereas, "The social work profession for generations has worked to strengthen the well-being and meet the basic needs of all people, especially people who are vulnerable, oppressed, and living in poverty." Whereas, "This year's Social Work Month theme, again, Social Workers Generation Strong, embodies the heroic work of social workers who for more than a century have worked to make our society a better place to live. Whereas, "The social work profession is a diverse profession that allows people of various generations, ethnicities, sexual identities, and religious backgrounds to make immediate positive impact on our nation and world. Whereas, "The social work profession is one of the fastest-growing professions in the United States with more than 777,000 people expected to be employed as social workers by 2028. Whereas, "Social workers work in all parts of our society to meet people where they are and empower them to live to their fullest potential. Whereas, "The social work profession, more than many other professions, has expansive boundaries that allow social workers to work in a variety of settings, including schools, centers for veterans, the military, hospitals, and mental health centers, corporations, local and state and federal government. Whereas, "Social workers for generations have worked with other professions, community groups, lawmakers, civil rights, and other organizations to bring equal rights for all, including women and people who are African-American, Latino, Native American, LGBTQ, and of various cultural, ethnic, and religious groups. Whereas, "The social work profession has been in the forefront of pushing for changes that have made our society a better place to live, including a minimum wage, improved workplace safety, and social safety net programs that help eliminate poverty and hunger. Whereas, "Social workers have been and continue to stand ready to help our nation in times of crisis, including war and natural disasters such as floods, earthquakes, and hurricanes. Whereas, "Social workers stand ready and have the expertise to help our nation handle some of its most pressing issues, including equal rights for all, improved healthcare and mental healthcare for all, immigration reform, income inequality, and environmental impact of climate change. Now Therefore, We, the Pitt County Board of Commissioners, Do hereby proclaim March 2020 as Social Worker Month in Pitt County, North Carolina. We commend this observance to our citizens as an opportunity of celebration and support of the social work profession. Adopted this 9th Day of March 2020, Signed by our Chairman, Mr. Melvin C. McLaughlin and Attested by our Clerk Kimberly W. Hines." Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. Thank you very much for your dedication.
And here we go, not bumping.
Thank you very much for your dedication.
I know we have some social workers here in the audience today. And I know that there are social workers throughout Pitt County, at the schools and other places that this acknowledges, so thank you all.
And with our health department too.
Yes, with our health department.
And with a number of hard-working social workers as well.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much. And now we should entertain the public address to the board. Mr. Manager, do we have anybody?
Mr. Chairman, nobody signed up unless you're somebody in the audience who wants to come forward.
Anyone in the audience would like to make a presentation as far as the public address to the board? Anyone? I hear none. Items for report. At this time, we're going to have, I asked, is it Dr.?
Dr. Silverneal. We have Dr. Silverneal and Dr. Linker. I think Dr. Silverneal is going to give the first report on behalf of Pitt County Public Health. And Dr. Linker, any comments he might want to make on behalf of the Pitt County school system and how this event may be affecting them.
I want to thank you, Dr. Silverneal, for coming up because this is a concern that has been plaguing the whole nation particularly. We've been having, the commission's been having some questions about the impact of North Carolina and Pitt County. Some say, "Stop going to church because it's a large crowd." Some are saying that the school environment has been impacted, Dr. Linker. So we certainly want to hear from you to see where we stand and some of the precautions that we need to take if necessary. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, fellow commissioners. At the manager's request, I prepared a briefing for you this morning. We had a long discussion in our department heads meeting last week and much of this material was discussed there as well. So first of all, for COVID-19, COVID-19 is what we call a novel coronavirus. It's an emerging infection, which means it arose rapidly. It was first recognized in China in late December of 2019. While the majority of COVID cases remain in China, the virus has spread to many countries. I want to say that that's north of '85 now. It's hard, every time you look at the tracker, it seems like it's been tested somewhere else. There was even a report of a dog testing positive for coronavirus. He was, he or she was not that ill though, it was an asymptomatic infection in the dog. This is a dynamic and rapidly changing situation. And some of the information I'm about to present to you is going to be outdated very quickly. So first of all, what are coronaviruses? Coronaviruses represent a...
Coronaviruses represent a large group of viruses that produce both human and animal disease. Human coronaviruses produce produce upper and lower respiratory tract infections, things that we would think of as our typical winter cold, bronchitis, and rarely pneumonia. And there's another group of poorly characterized coronavirus coronavirus particles that produce gastroenteritis or diarrheal illness in in people. A novel coronavirus is a newly-evolved virus to which humans have little or no immunity. In the case of COVID-19, an animal virus became able to infect humans. COVID-19 is the third coronavirus that has been able to make the jump to humans, the other two being SARS and MERS, which happened earlier in the two, earlier in the in the 21st century here, in the earlier 2000s. Coronavirus is believed to have made the jump from bats to people. It's been presented that its genetics match the bat coronavirus family. This slide is an attempt to try to show you why these things are so scary. So for a minute, I want you to think that you're down at the river or maybe down at the beach, and it's high tide, and there's a rock or a piling, and we can't see the top of that rock or the piling because the tide is over that. When a when a novel infection emerges, the first thing we see are the deaths. So we see a group of folks who get diagnosed and recognize that they have a new infection, and those are the folks who die of that infection. As the tide goes out a little bit, we see the folks that get hospitalized, and then we see the folks that are sick enough to seek medical care but not necessarily sick enough to to end up in the hospital. And then there's a large burden of disease that is mildly symptomatic or asymptomatic, and oftentimes, we don't know how big that that body of disease is in these infections because they are so new. We're seeing the sickest people first. So there's a bit of a selection bias in in what we see, and that makes the numbers initially look much worse than they they really are once we get the full spectrum of the disease known. So if you can think about that, like I say, a pyramid, deaths first, hospitalizations, sick enough to seek care, and then a bunch of folks who have mild or asymptomatic illness that that move in our, you know, through the community. And and probably with this infection, eighty percent of folks are in that mild to asymptomatic range. The challenges of these infections include that that there's usually little or no experience in treating the infection in the medical community. There are often limited diagnostic capabilities, and you know, there's been trouble or or not a great availability of testing for this. First, it was just at the CDC. It's been pushed out to the state labs. On Friday, LabCorp revealed, released a a testing platform, which was FDA-approved and can now be run through LabCorp, which will help improve the number of folks or increase the number of folks who can be tested. So early on, there's often no test or a very limited ability to test for these novel infections. Many times, there are limited treatment options, meaning that we don't have effective antibiotics or antiviral agents to treat these infections, and oftentimes, there is no vaccine for these infections, again, because they are new to humankind. Specifics right now, and and again, these numbers are a little bit dated from when we put the slides together on Friday. As of Friday, there were 100,347 cases. There were 233 cases in the U.S. This morning, when I looked before I came into the Commissioners Meeting, there were 111,321 cases in the world, and in the U.S., 564 cases, per the Johns Hopkins Tracker. CDC has only been updating their case counts about three times a week, so we've we've returned to other sources. There have been two cases diagnosed in North Carolina, one in the Triangle area, and then one in Chatham County that was released on Friday. To date, we have no act, no cases in Pitt County. I know there's been some rumors circulating that there have been cases in Pitt County. This is a mandatory reportable disease. You have to report it to public health authorities, and we have no reports of of cases being diagnosed in the county. The deaths as of Friday, there were 3,400, a little over 3,400 deaths. This morning, that number is 3,892 in the U.S. We are at 22 deaths by one source, and I want to say 24 by another, so in the low twenties. So that sounds scary. Anytime we hear that that citizens are dying, that that scares us, and especially when it's a new infection that we don't know a lot about, that scares us. But to put that in perspective, for this flu season, we've had 32 million cases of influenza in the United States. That resulted in 310,000 hospitalizations, not on the slide, approximately 18,000 U.S. deaths, including 125,000, or 125 pediatric deaths. So, more than six, almost six times the number of folks this season have died of influenza just in the U.S. has have died around the world from COVID-19. How can we protect ourselves? Let me say, there is some good news in this. Most individuals will suffer only a mild to moderate illness with this infection, and that probably represents about 80,000, eighty percent of people. We have, and we have great experience in treating a virus with similar infectivity, that being influenza. So so it's not all gloom and doom. The other things that we can do to help protect ourselves, hygiene, isolation, quarantine, and what's known as social distancing. Hygiene, been a lot of talk about the hand sanitizers, sold out. Well, soap and water works just fine to to remove this virus from your hands. While sanitizers are convenient, they're not a must-have. Soap and water will destroy this virus if you just wash your hands with some soap and water. Covering coughs and sneezes, sneezing or coughing into your elbow, using a handkerchief or tissue or something else to cover that cough so that you're not spreading the droplets. We believe that this is mostly spread by respiratory droplets. And to avoid touching your eyes, nose, and mouth until you have washed your hands, so as not to inoculate yourself with the virus should it be on your hands. And I've added, "Stop smoking and stop and/or vaping" because when you smoke or vape, you constantly irritate your respiratory system, and that makes it easier for infections to invade your your respiratory system. Isolation, the definition of isolation is the separation of infected persons from others during the period of communicability. So for this, we would isolate known or suspected cases. For mild cases, those folks could be isolated at home. In the hospital, those folks would likely be isolated in an airborne isolation room just for additional protection. Quarantine is the limitation of freedom of movement of persons who are suspected to have been exposed to an infectious agent. Quarantine lasts as long as the usual incubation period of the infectious agent. Initially, a quarantine order can be issued for 30 days, up to 30 days, but we would use the least amount of days required, and in the case of COVID-19, that would be 14 days is the quarantine period after exposure. It can be extended by court order if it were to go beyond 30 days for some reason. Social distancing, this might include things like closing schools, churches, movie theaters, restaurants, other places of public assembly, perhaps allowing employees to work from home, reconsidering the use of sick time and allowances during the outbreak so that sick employees could stay at home. Many employees are are kind of on that bubble of not having a lot of paid time off banked and and may choose to come into work when they are sick, even if they shouldn't. So some things like that could be reconsidered. Those would not be my decisions. Those would be the employer's decision. And we didn't put it on here, we taught, when we talk about droplet spread, we usually talk about four to six feet. So, we're all sitting closer than four feet together in the room here, so we're we're not doing a good job of that, but we're sometimes limited by the physical space that we're in, and that's where where some of these other ideas come come from in terms of keeping groups from forming and and being so close. We did, gosh, the days kind of blend together. We have stood up a a dedicated page for coronavirus on the Public Health Department's website, and that link is is shown for you. The next slide provides a glimpse of what that looked like at the time the slides were prepared. Again, the case counts would be would be out of date. And I'm happy to entertain any questions or comments, discussion that you all might have.
I have a question.
Mr. Chairman?
There was a statement in the national news this morning talking about the center, a center for the, those who may, setting up a center for those who may have symptoms of the coronavirus. At what point does that take place?
I'm not sure what the-
Or is it a real, a real situation?
I did not see that in the news, Commissioner. I'm not sure exactly what they were talking about. It may be appropriate to set up some sort of alternate care site for people who wanted to come in and just get coronavirus testing. I don't know that we're there yet because, again, we have no cases in Pitt County, and we do not believe that we have community transmission in North Carolina at this time.
Well, it came up when they were talking about the healthcare professionals getting sick and that at some point, that should be an option. But I know it's sort of new perhaps, but I was wondering the element of how soon or what.
And sometimes with these, with any infection, the the hospital environment can become a magnifier or an amplifier for that infection. So for healthcare workers, we would, we would want them to wear appropriate personal protective equipment, mask, gowns, eye protection, things like that while they're treating these patients. If there was no break in their protective ensemble, and if they removed it properly without contaminating themselves, and and generally, we do this as a monitoring, that you have, if you're the person wearing the gear, you you put your gear on, you do the patient care, and now we have somebody monitor you take that off so that you don't inadvertently contaminate yourself. So as long as there was no break in that technique, we would not consider those folks exposed. We would monitor them, but we wouldn't force them into quarantine. We'd we'd very quickly deplete our healthcare resources if we did that. If there was a break in in that personal protective equipment or some exposure, then we would would take those folks off off duty and quarantine them. Does that kind of answer your question?
Yes, I was concerned because I have a lot of family members in healthcare.
Yeah. And again, the other, the reassuring thing is that most of us, if you're if you're less than the age of 60 and in good health, the virus would would probably only produce a mild to moderate illness in those folks. Most of the deaths with this have been in folks over the age of 60 and with underlying medical problems.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Dr. Silvernell, for coming today. How are we doing on readiness for testing in Pitt County? Availability of test kits? Just preparedness?
The the State Health Department provided each health department, each local health department with three test kits. It is a common respiratory virus isolate kit, as far as we can tell. So we have a number of those in in stock at the Health Department. We generally don't do acute care for people, but if it reaches the point, we may be able to set up something where we could be be swabbing folks if we needed to. As far as the hospital, I believe they have adequate supplies of the respiratory pathogens, test kits, and and would be able to collect it and process it.
I guess, and then one, one more follow-up question. Obviously, COVID is, hopefully, this doesn't become a huge issue here in Pitt County, but just looking out in the future for preparedness for similar events, what steps is our Health Department taking to make sure that we're coordinating with our regional health partners and our and our regional municipalities to make sure that we have good communications in the event that we do have a severe crisis?
We we discussed issues internally at our Department Heads Meeting last week. I've spoken with the Emergency Management Director several times. I have a meeting this Thursday with the local health directors from Region 10, and I'm sure this will be a big point of discussion on Thursday. I am on numerous conference calls with the state and the CDC to put as much information as I can into into my head about the situation. We update, reviewed, and updated our isolation and quarantine plan, and I have our pandemic influenza plan, which would be a model for any infectious disease that I'm in the process of reviewing at this time.
Can I ask one follow-up question? On that website, will it have the cases for Pitt County showing up on a daily basis or whenever?
If if we were to have cases, yes, we would, we would post cases on there.
Okay, because cut down the spread of gossip.
Ms. Coulson?
Unfortunately, several months ago, I had to take my wife to the emergency room. That was a god-awful experience. It was overcrowded. We were 100 and I think 12 in the line, and it was just terrible. From your perspective, is the hospital able to handle this, and are they prepared? But a follow-up with that, is I heard on the national news that if you think you might have the disease or the symptoms, don't go to an emergency room. So where do you go if you don't go to the emergency room?
Yeah, there's, I guess the first part of it is, if you're sick enough to go to the emergency room, by all means, go, go to the emergency room. The vast majority of folks will probably have a mild to moderate illness and could be effectively managed at home. As to the hospital, I don't speak for the hospital. I do believe they are prepared to handle these types of situations. They have a plan for the mass influx of infected patients, and I believe they have implemented that, but I I cannot speak for the hospital directly.
So what if you have a family member that has lost 50% of their lung capacity due to emphysema? They are definitely on the list, being elderly and underlying condition. After going to the hospital, if anybody in there has it, everybody's going to get it from, from what I could tell. I mean, it was, it was a mess. So where would this person go? What would they do if they didn't go to the emergency room, but they have this underlying health issue?
They should probably talk to their personal physician and see if they can be treated as an outpatient, if they are, again, having trouble breathing, if they're short of breath, if their oxygen levels are low, then they would need to seek care through the emergency department for that.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Dr. Silvernell, what is the difference from this coronavirus than the just common flu? And without testing, could could we see the actual difference?
I'm not sure I understand the the question.
The coronavirus, what's the difference of this than the common flu? Because I understand the symptoms are similar.
Yeah, that's, that's been the bane, that is the bane of medicine, Mr. Chairman, that that many viral illnesses initially look very similar in terms of their presentation. The folks who have seen these cases and and reported out on these cases, report that fever, cough, and shortness of breath seem to be the hallmarks of the coronavirus. The coronavirus and influenza are in different families of viruses. Influenza, when it presents in adults, is generally a very abrupt onset. It presents with high fever, sore throat, cough, shaking chills, and intense body aches. And those patients usually can come into the office and tell you exactly when it started. And they'll come in, they'll say, "Doc, you know, at 10 o'clock on Tuesday night, I just had the shaking chill, I got a sore throat, I started coughing, and I felt like I was hit by a truck." The body aches are not part of the the coronavirus syndrome and, you know, would would more likely mean an influenza infection in in folks. So there's some some historical hallmarks that that patients will tell you that might cue you as the clinician, that it is one infection versus the other. We have good rapid testing for influenza that is done in almost every office, be that an urgent care, the ED, or a primary care physician's office. That may be an immunoassay, or it may be a molecular or genetic assay for that infection, and that's another way that we can separate that. The hospital lab runs a a respiratory panel that covers 12 common viral respiratory illnesses that we see in the community here. So, many folks who present to the hospital with some sort of respiratory illness are tested by that panel to see if it is one of those more common pathogens. If that is negative, then now with COVID-19 around, they may very well go ahead and and request the COVID-19 testing as well.
Now, do we know where and how did this virus originate?
That is unclear. We know it emerged in Wuhan, China, a city of 11 million folks. The population density in Wuhan is calculated to be 3,200 folks, 3,200 people per square mile. In Pitt County, I believe, we're about 258 people per square mile, so far less dense population than it emerged in. I know there are some some conspiracy theories out there about where the virus may have come from. I I do not want to give them credence as your public health director and would would prefer that that history resolve that issue. From the genetics of the virus, it appears as though the the virus was derived from bats and was able to make the jump to people.
I'd like to follow up with Commissioner Coulson's line of inquiry here, and it, obviously, you don't speak for Viden Medical Center, but I wonder if it wouldn't be possible for our county page to have a formalized statement about what Viden's standard operating procedure is going to be in the event that someone's exhibiting symptoms, so that, so you know, obviously, getting most information out in front of as many people as possible is probably the best. We've heard, I think, a lot of us in the news, about some hospitals setting up separate separate ways for folks that are experiencing symptoms to access the hospital. separate ways for folks that are experiencing symptoms to access the hospital outside of the emergency department. From what I'm hearing from you is that you haven't heard from Viden Medical Center that they've established those procedures, or at least it hasn't been communicated to you. That's, I think, a problem, um, something that we need to make sure that we're getting out in front of. And I think, um, Commissioner Coulson's, uh, inquiry brings up that point. Where do you go? And if we can get that information from Viden, um, out in front of our constituents, I think that'd be really helpful.
Yep, I, I'm happy to reach out to them, and if they had something they would like us to add to the webpage, we can do that. I do, Dr. Ramsey, who is both the chairman of the board of health and then the medical director of infection control at the hospital, and he and I have spoken several times every day since this has started, uh, multiple emails. So we are, we are back and forth, uh, in communication every day, um, during the workday and after hours as well. I, I do not sit on that Viden committee at this time. Uh, I have offered to do that. We have had some joint messaging to providers, uh, through the chief of staff, email list service to get messages out to physicians, uh, that have been jointly approved by the chief of staff, myself, and Dr. Ramsey.
If there's no other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have like two, two comments. Um, our website page on this issue has been the, um, second most visited page on our, our website. It's the number one searched for this topic as well. So the public is looking at this page and, um, would invite them and ask them to continue looking at it. And also in terms of, um, the facilities of Pitt County government, we have asked our contractor ECVC to take extra care in wiping things down, surfaces, doorknobs, and so forth. So just for the board's information and our employee base.
I, I might mention to you commissioners, just in case you missed it, we did put out a written statement, uh, to the public last week regarding this, trying to allay some fears, and then did a group press conference that afternoon as well with, with local media to, to try and answer questions and, and allay some of the fears in our community.
Thank you very much for your presentation. I'm going to add that link if he would come forward and...
Morning, Chairman McLawhorn. You know, we briefed our, our board last Monday at our board meeting on, on where we are with our processes. And, um, you know, we also have a pandemic flu, uh, emergency preparedness plan as well. So that's being, being shared with everybody. Uh, we also link basically everything that Dr. Silvernow just said is what we're telling our people to be doing, and, um, just trying to keep everybody aware, just like, uh, Dr. Silvernow is as well. I will be meeting with, uh, a large number of superintendents in a day, or actually Wednesday, to, um, discuss what plans they have in their schools. Of course, we're communicating with Washington, the CDC, communicating with DPI and Department of Health and Human Services. Now we're actually collecting a list of all of our field trips that are going to be out of, out of the area to see what we need to do there.
When is spring break?
I think it starts on the eleventh or twelfth of, uh, April. It's about, about a month away.
I, I would like to know, are you doing anything like having your custodial staff washing down the, the doorknobs? And are you making?
Right, we're treating this very similar to what, just like we have, uh, you know, flu season. Wiping down desks, doorknobs, phones, everything that gets touched a lot. Doing that on a, on a routine basis, a daily basis. We also have, uh, two of our, our, we have two lead custodial, um, supervisors who work with our lead custodians at every school. They go out to these schools, monitor what's going on, and help, uh, make sure they're getting trained properly and doing what they need to do. Uh, we also shared all this information with our principals last week at our principal meeting, doing the same things that, uh, that Dr. Silvernow was saying about, you know, teaching our kids how to cough, how to wash their hands, those sort of things. And, um, just trying to do, do the hygiene, not plus to do all the preventive stuff as well.
Well, this, this is off the subject of, uh, coronavirus, but I, there, there was a bullying incident that happened here in, uh, Pitt County with one of our students. I think one death is one too many. And, uh, what are, what are some of the national practices are we undertaking now to prevent this thing, this tragedy from hap- happening again?
We are continuing to work with the parents and have dialogue between parents, uh, work with our parents from public schools group to get information out. We have parent meetings. In fact, there's actually one on the twenty-fourth. I'd invite you at Bundy's, I'd invite you to go and listen to it. Which was a resilience training, uh, for our parents and our, uh, teachers as well.
Okay, I think that's certainly something that we, we need to need to take very, very seriously. Definitely would hate to see another tragic incident of that nature. It's not blaming the school system, but, uh, we need to do all we can do to prevent that.
Correct, I agree a hundred percent.
Okay, if there's no further questions, thank you very much for your presentation. At this time, we have Bryant, finally.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners. I have some, uh, good news to report. The, uh, the National Government Financial Officers Association has awarded Pitt County its twenty-third consecutive distinguished budget award. This is the highest award from a local government, uh, standpoint that you can receive from a, from, from a financial standpoint. Our budget document has to pass several national, uh, guidelines. We have to score at least a proficient in several areas. And our, uh, budget, uh, the current budget that we're in actually is rated as a tool for a policy, uh, financial plan, communication, and an operational guide. Again, um, it's good news for us. It's part of our expectations of our staff to put a budget together that you all can follow and that our community can look at and to be as transparent as possible.
Thank you very much, Bryant. Now we have the department spotlight, Teresa Bayhoff.
Mr. Chairman, while we wait for that, do we want to maybe go to my report? And we can come back to, um, the department spotlight. So for the manager's report, the, um, next meetings will be March twenty-third at six o'clock, and then April sixth at nine a, nine AM. Um, item B was to give those who went to the NACO Legislative Conference, which was the National Association of Counties Annual Conference in Washington, DC, just a moment to maybe report out of what they heard. And I'll, myself went with Chairman McLawhorn, Commissioner Ian Huggins, and Commissioner Mary Perkins-Williams. I'll give you all a opportunity to report out, and I'll add anything as needed.
Oh, oh, sure. Uh, I, um, as, as Scott said, I attended the conference in DC. Uh, I'm on the Human Service Steering Committee, so we met and we passed, uh, several, um, resolutions. And, uh, those, uh, resolutions pertain mostly to Department of, uh, DSS. I, before I went, I called Jan to get some, uh, some, uh, input on the, some of the proposed, uh, resolutions, get her, her idea on that. So since I will be voting on those. Uh, we heard from, uh, several, uh, senators and representatives about legislations they are working on. Uh, one in particular, uh, from Representative Connolly, spoke about a bipartisan bill that he sponsored, uh, that would restore partnership, the Partnership Act, uh, and this would facilitate cooperation and accountability among federal, state, tribal, and local governments. So I'm sure w- we, uh, we would want to, uh, him to pursue that. Uh, of course, they touched on an array of issues important to counties. They want the counties to feel heard. We heard from, uh, General Colin Powell, who shared his leadership skills. And we were given a copy of, uh, his book called, named, uh, It Works For Me. Uh, that's, that's really some interesting reading. NACO has also put together, um, a twelve-week, um, Leadership, uh, Academy and using, uh, General Colin Powell's, uh, curriculum for that. Of course, we visited our senators and representative Senator Tillis, uh, Burr, and Representative Butterfield and Murphy. We presented them with the ten priorities that, that NACO have, uh, put forth. So, uh, we did that. And, uh, I believe, and that's about all I want to report on. I don't need something for somebody else to say.
Great reporting. Commissioner Huggins, um, I'd like to add to that is, um, one thing I was very concerned about is the, um, the stop on Capitol Hill. And I brought up broadband and the fact that we need another Corps of Engineer appraisal and that especially here in Pitt County. And I understand that it will be on, coming out something of, they're going to do something for the Corps of Engineer. Am I getting it right?
I'm not sure on that part of it.
Well, we brought it up with, uh, one of the senators and, uh, about we need a Corps of Engineer appraisal because the flooding in the water and what happens with, uh, in certain areas in this part of the state, that they're in great concern. And I was told that it was happening, and, uh, that's why we are not exactly sure, but at least we brought it up. One of the highlights of the, um, the conference this year was that the, um, precedent appeared and that, um, was quite, uh, it was quite a focus at that time. And the audience was, uh, of course screened, and we had to go through this, um, the secret service, um, searches and stuff. But that was an interesting part as well. Uh, it was a very good attendance, uh, conference. And the timetable switched as we went along, but that's where you get the policy. The National Association of Counties is where we get the federal, uh, policies that will be impacting us, and we get to pick them up or get to view them, get to vote on them, and get to approve them at the National Association of Counties Legislative Conference. And that's, that happens every year around this time. And I find those policies and the policy brief quite interesting, and that's where you can get some idea of what should be coming down. Thank you.
I would just add the report, um, great, great coverage. Two other things, two workshops. One, Commissioner Floyd Huggins and I attended. One was on homelessness. Learned some things on there that I think will add value to the report she's going to be making later in, on the agenda. And second, one I went to on recycling, which was very timely with, um, recycling issues, not only in Pitt County and the state of North Carolina, but across the country. That gave me some insight as we move forward and work with ECVC and our municipal partners, um, to come up with solutions to retool and to, um, maybe fix our recycling program we have here in Pitt County. So, um, just wanted to add that.
That was a certain national concern of, uh, with the co-mingling of this recycling program. This, we thought that, we, we think that we have a problem here in Pitt County, but nationally, it is a, a strong concern. And, and, uh, I think we're going to have to really focus on how we're going to deal with this moving forward. Okay?
So one, one other thing I might report, the, um, item C recognition. We would recognize Kelly Andrews from our, um, Pitt County Industrial Development Commission. Kelly is at, at a town at a conference and could not be here, but she has taken and passed a international exam and has been designated as a certified economic developer. And she actually had to go down to Tampa, Florida to take this. The pass rate on this, this exam is, on the first try is twenty-six percent. Only twenty-six percent of the people actually pass it. Kelly passed it on her, her first try. So we actually will have two people in the, um, Industrial Development Commission office who are certified. Scott Darnell, who came here with that designation, and now Kelly Andrews. So that's, to have two people in one economic development office with that certification is, um, powerful.
Congratulations to her.
Even though she's not here, she may be able to take.
And at this point, Florida, do we know if, um, going to move on? Okay, we may come back to the report if we can find it. If not, we may defer it to another meeting on veteran services.
Okay, at this time, we have items for consent.
I mean, for acceptance, second.
It's moving properly second. Let's vote, please. Very good. At this time, we have, uh, items for discussion. I have Commissioner Floyd Huggins, if she would bring to our attention, if you want to come to. Want to do it from there? You want to go, you want to go to the, okay, very good.
Oh, thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. For some time there, um, at, well, on the, first of all, on the, uh, agenda, it says Hope Station Homeless Shelter Proposal. For some time there, I have, uh, the homeless population of, um, Greenville, Pitt County has been, um, one of my, um, my, one of my initiatives. So I've, I've been talking to, uh, I first talked, because I walk mornings in my neighborhood, I see, uh, uh, see people who are homeless and sleeping on porches and, and cars and all that. So that has really, uh, brought it to the forefront for me. So for several months, I have been talking to, uh, to a group of people about, uh, the homeless population. The county owned, um, a building on Memorial Drive, um, that was, uh, an old fire station, but it was, um, used for a nonprofit some time ago. And it has been vacant, uh, for probably two years or so. So, uh, so, uh, as I said, I've been talking to some people along with, uh, Scott, our county manager, other, uh, providers in the, uh, who are, handle homelessness. That's United Way, uh, and also Crossroads. So, uh, I brought in all of the people who, uh, who provide, uh, shelter for, for the homeless population. So, uh, it has come down to, uh, about seven churches, uh, that I have, uh, that I've been working with. And these are, uh, African-American churches so far that, that we've been, uh, working with. Uh, and, uh, we have, uh, elected officers. We have, uh, some of those, uh, people here. If I can have you all to stand up so you can see. Okay. These are the ones that, that I've been talking to and as part of this organization. Thank you, you all may be seated. Uh, we have a name for our organization, and it's called Safe of Pitt County. Uh, and that stands for Station for Adults and Families Empowerment of Pitt County. Uh, we have, uh, put together, uh, our monies to, uh, um, to employ architect. That architect is now, um, uh, in the process of putting together a design for this building that, uh, would, uh, and, and our, our thinking is to use this building in addition to the crossroad, because there are some, uh, people who just don't fit into, uh, the use of, of, of that facility. And so right now, at, we're at the point where we're bringing this initiative to the county. We're not asking you for any money, but we are asking to move forward with this and use the building. We will be, uh, coming back with a, a lease proposal.
I have a question. Is it for anyone who's homeless?
Yes.
Just because it's African-American culture?
Yes.
I didn't want it to go out that it was just African-Americans who are homeless.
If I can just expand on Commissioner Huggins', um, concept here. So this is, uh, proposals to be an alternative shelter to the Community Crossroads Shelter in the city of Greenville. It would, um... It would potentially house folks maybe that they would not typically house due to certain conditions and so forth. Couple of things that will still need to happen, the creation of a 501(c)(3) that will be called SAFE.
We will be applying for that.
And then the, the property will need to seek rezoning with the city of Greenville through the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council in order for it to be used for this purpose. I think it requires a special use permit. So, there's still some hoops to go through. But I think Commissioner Huggins is seeking the board's consensus or approval. She's presenting a concept and is, wants to say, hey, can we continue moving forward? Didn't want to spend a lot of money otherwise to create the 501(c)(3) or to pay the architect to see what the renovation cost would be and seeking the rezoning and so forth. So, I think that's where, I won't put words in your mouth, but.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we've already spent money on the architect.
Is there any reason why it should be just for discussion now? Can we not go ahead and vote for it or against it? I mean, I understand the hoops, but if we vote for it and say, yeah, we'd like to pursue this avenue, then doesn't that give it a little bit more emphasis than just saying okay for now?
Then we make the motion.
Yeah, I think it'd be more appropriate and then maybe Commissioner Huggins can, and his staff.
Well, then I'd like to make a motion that we proceed with this.
My second.
Hold on, favorite letter, they don't buy your vote?
And while we're voting, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to thank Ann for her effort on this and, and the people out there in the community who are supporting it. Thank you.
Very good.
And what is the motion, just to consider the concept?
No, actually to pursue it and go with that.
To support it and pursue it.
So, we won't be getting a report back on how much this would cost us, if anything, before we?
They're saying that.
The only cost would actually be that we would be leasing the building to them. I would hope for some very nominal fee, a dollar a year or something like that. A county could use an extra dollar, right?
We've looked at some other leases where we've.
Is it still a dollar?
The, the building itself, yes, we would lease for a nominal amount of money. And typically the county would, would take care of the needs of the exterior of the building, the roof, the HVAC, and the entity would take care of anything within the building.
But you got to do that anyway, right?
Yeah, that's, yes, that's you doing that anyway.
I, I think the other situation that we're going to be looking to is, is making sure that it meets all the city recommendation in terms of that. And Scott is going to be looking into that area.
Well, the reason for my motion was to let the city know that we're really serious about it. And I think it sends a stronger signal.
That signal, excuse me, might encourage other churches to get involved also. And I'd like you to reach out.
How would they do that? If, if other churches wanted to get involved with this, who, they would contact you?
Yes. And as I said, we have Officer Leroy Telfair is the president of this group.
Mr. Chairman, can we also add to that motion that as the group of SAFE needs to seek a rezoning of the property, it'll have to be in the name of Pitt County because Pitt County owns the property. As SAFE has been kind of the applicant, but we're the owner, we'll have to sign off on it, that we could, without having to come back to you, we could sign that paperwork when and if needed.
Right. I'm good with that.
Yes, so are you authorized, are there costs associated with that that would be borne by the county? And what would that, does the board want to know the estimate of those costs or not?
Would those costs be borne by SAFE?
Who would bear those costs, is my question, I guess.
Would SAFE bear the cost? Maybe, I don't know, $1,000, $1,500 or $2,000 for the rezoning typically?
To me, there's no issue so long as all of those costs are borne by the nonprofit. The county could not substitute its labor and, and funds for the efforts of the nonprofit. But we can certainly, as the owner of the property, support an application that's paid for by the anticipated tenant.
Since we've already voted, what do we need to do?
Another motion.
Need another motion, you want to?
Okay, well then, as amended by Scott, I'd like to.
Accept it. As a second.
Does it need to be a new motion, Madam Chairman, or can we amend the existing motion?
I would recommend that you do a new motion that would be to the effect that the county is authorized to pursue the rezoning of the property at the, with the costs paid for by the nonprofit.
You've heard the motion.
Okay, that's the motion.
Motion, I second.
Let's vote. Very good. Motion passed. And again, let us thank the committee for your work, your leadership on Mr. Telfair and appreciate all, all that you're doing for this. This is a needed process in our community. So, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if you would like, the Veteran Services presentation is ready to go. If you'd like to go back to it?
Yes, sir. Teresa Paul? Happy to have you.
If we can get that presentation before the commissioners on the screens? Flip the switch on back.
Want to go ahead or wait for them?
Hold on just a moment. Okay, we're ready.
Okay. Well, good morning.
Good morning.
After a little bit of delay. But it is good to be here with you today and to let you know a little bit about what Pitt County Veteran Services is doing. We do serve all the branches of the military, that being the Air Force, the Navy, the Army, the Marines, the Coast Guard, and the Merchant Marines. We do have a few Merchant Marines here in Pitt County. Our mission of the Pitt County Veteran Service Office is to assist veterans and their dependents with applying for and maintaining the benefits that they are eligible to receive from the U.S. Department of Veteran Affairs. One of the main things that we do is service-connected injuries and diseases. This works a lot like work miss compensation. When a veteran has a disease or an injury that occurred while they were in the military, then they're able to receive compensation from the Department of Veteran Affairs. Also, any surviving spouses and children, when a veteran dies from a service-connected condition, they also can receive benefits. Pension is another program we do a lot of in Pitt County. It's an income-based monetary and medical benefits program for non-service-connected veterans. Now, service-connected veterans can switch over to pension if it's of a greater benefit. So, service-connected veterans can go to either way. But this allows veterans of wartime that are not service-connected to receive benefits from the VA. An example of that would be currently, if a veteran is married, disabled, and in need of aid and attendance and is paying for home health care, at this time, the VA would pay that veteran $2,226 a month from the VA. So, that's a huge benefit if you're trying to keep someone home. We do have medical care here in Pitt County with our new clinic over on Moy Boulevard. It's done a lot for this region. They no longer have to go to Durham for just basic testing. There's x-rays, MRIs, colonoscopies, all kinds of things now. Surgical, they do still have to go to Durham. They don't do any surgical here in Greenville. And we do have rehab services. We help with burial benefits when veterans deceased, with coordinating with the veteran cemeteries, the burial flags, the grave markers. Burial assistance would be any refunds that the family would be due from the VA that can be up to, but not over $2,000. And then the presidential certificate. We work with home loans and improvements of homes, structural alterations. If a veteran is in his home and maybe he becomes wheelchair-bound, can't get into his bathroom because the door is too small, then there's grants that we can help that veteran with to have his house altered so that he can get into his house. We do work with the life insurance. So, veterans who are issued a service-connected rating can get life insurance from the VA under certain conditions. And also, when a veteran is rated 100%, then there becomes Champ VA Free Health Insurance for his dependents. Education, we help veterans get into the Vote Rehab Program. These are veterans with disabilities that can then go into the college and the VA will help with their college expenses. Chapter 35, 100% service-connected veterans for their dependents. This is for their spouse and their children. And we also help with the North Carolina Scholarships. East Carolina University and Pitt Community College both have a veteran office on their campus that helps with education with the GI Bill. I'm proud to say that Pitt County Veteran Service Office is one of two counties in the state of North Carolina that has gone to Washington, DC and represented veterans' cases in front of the law judges at the Board of Veteran Appeals. Some other services that we do, we coordinate with funeral homes. Oftentimes, when veterans deceased, we get phone calls from the funeral homes and we try to help with discharges and the benefits available to the family. We do a lot of work with the Council on Aging, with nursing homes and rest homes in the area, Vida Medical Center, and Department of Social Services. There's just shy of 11,000 veterans that live in Pitt County. And in the fiscal year 2018, Veteran Affairs paid little over $71 million into Pitt County. This is non-taxable money. So, this is spendable money into Pitt County. Before, Pitt County had a VSO in 1996, the VA only paid just under $10 million. So, we can see that we have increased the value there. Do we have any questions?
I'd like a copy of this presentation.
Ma'am?
I'd like a copy of the presentation.
We'll put a copy of this in the weekly info packet for you.
I don't have a question, I just have a comment. I want to thank you for all that you do. My grandpa, he was a disabled World War II veteran, so this is very near and dear to my heart. Thank you.
Any other comments? I hear none. Thank you very much for, for that presentation.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I'd like to just recognize in the audience, Dr. Rouse and his staff. Dr. Rouse, any comments you want to make at this time?
Well, thank you for recognizing me. Today is not an official visit, but I just wanted to let you know that we have at Pitt Community College a leadership development program for our faculty and staff. And one of the things that we want to do is to let them know how local government and county government works. So, today is a field trip to come out to the commissioners' meeting and observe the operations here. So, I do have with me Vice President Dr. Anna Rollison, as well as several of our faculty and staff. You would stand and introduce yourselves, please.
Good morning, I'm Dr. Anna Rollison, and I have the great pleasure of serving as the Vice President of Career Resources at Pitt Community College. And as President Rouse stated, we have with us this morning some of our attendees at Dr. Rouse's first Leadership Professional Development Academy. And thank you for allowing them to state their name and what how they serve at Pitt Community College.
Good morning, I'm Amy Staten. I am a 300 Court Services Tutor Coordinator and English instructor.
My name is William Freeman. I'm the Vida Network Engagement Commission with the STEM Outreach for all community colleges in Pittsburgh.
Good morning, my name is Natasha Worthington. I work in the Career College Promise Office that did the duly-enrolled high school students.
Good morning, I'm Sherry Berthwaite. I'm a Small Business Counselor at Pitt Community College in the Business Division.
Derek Mullins, I serve as Student Activities Coordinator and Co-Missouri Coordinator, and also serve at the head of basketball.
Hi, Dennis Marshall. I work in the Electrical Systems Technology as an instructor and also I'm the Skills USA Coordinator.
Well, thank you for allowing us to introduce them to you. And they have been very observant this morning. And we will have a meeting after we go back to kind of debrief a little bit on county government. But thank you for allowing us to be here.
I think it's been suggested that if anything you, you want to speak on what kind of action, practice, action that you're taking with the coronavirus situation on Pitt County.
We, we are very concerned about the virus. And my leadership team and I have met. And we have also sent our correspondence to our faculty and staff. And because we do a lot of international travel and we have a couple of trips that were scheduled, we've canceled those trips, particularly to areas that are known to have high concentration of the virus. We have advised all of our faculty and staff on hygiene and how to safely keep yourself safe. We have engaged an agency that will come out and actually disinfect our, our college and different buildings that we have if need be. But we're just advising everyone and kind of keeping our eye on, you know, as, as it develops. And we're also, of course, concerned about our students and we're sharing that same information. Should this become a pandemic here in Pitt County, we are suggesting that we not hold classes, but we deliver our instruction through distance education. And for those areas that we can't, then we'll make it up. And we're encouraging folks who are sick to stay home.
Thank you very.
Thank you.
Thank you. Items for decision, a request for the property tax, Janice and Sam Crowe at this time.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman and board members. This, you have before you a request under General Statute 105381 by Thermo Fisher Scientific for a release of a property tax bill that was, a business personal property tax bill that was issued in their name. They've provided an affidavit that that equipment is actually owned by Patheon Manufacturing Services. By granting this request for release, you will allow the tax office to issue that bill to Patheon. And Patheon has already paid that bill. So, we can issue the bill lest the, reflecting the credit plus their late-list penalties that would be due beyond that. If you are in agreement to follow the assessor's office recommendation, which is laid out in detail in your packet, we would ask for a motion as recommended, which is to grant the release and to direct me to send a letter to the taxpayer and authorize the, to the taxpayer's attorney and for the tax assessor to issue a new bill to Patheon Manufacturing Services.
Has been moved properly second. That we follow those instructions. Let it be known by your vote, please.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you. The reapportments to the Vida Medical Center Board, Scott.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, on page 44, you have two reapportments being requested to the Vida Medical Center Board recommending the reapportment of Mr. Bryant Kettrell and Dr. Michael Waldrum.
I move that we approve these reapportments.
Moving properly second, let it be known by your vote, please. Passes. Now, we have the appointment of the Pitt Area Transit System Advisory Board.
Yes, on the Pats System Board, Pitt Area Transit System, we have the requested appointment of Ms. James to the board.
So moved.
Has been moved properly second, let's vote. At this time, we have closed session. And we're going to ask our attorney, if she would.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It has been suggested that this board go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143318.11a3, under the attorney-client privilege to consult with an attorney employed by the public body in order to preserve that attorney-client privilege and also under subsection A1 to prevent the disclosure of confidential information. With that, you'll need a motion to go into closed session.
Has been moved properly second, that we now go into a closed session, let's vote.